Did you make cupcakes for him or something?
Um, I brought him a cactus.
He's recording.
Oh, no, you just have to call the meeting to order.
Oh, okay.
Cause he's prickly.
Calling the meeting to order?
And we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take the roll call. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, Council at Large, here.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Councilman Ron Quagliani, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Bridget Hoskies absent. Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite.
Councilwoman Melie Garthwaite, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnano.
Councilwoman Mitchell Galagnano, Fourth District, present.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is absent. Councilman Victor Boris is absent. Councilman Robert Bruno is absent. Councilman Stephen Johnstone is absent and our Chairman Peter Mazzaro is also absent. And we do have a quorum. Ms. Chairwoman.
Thank you.
And I will read the call of the meeting. West Haven City Council Sustainability Committee Council as a whole, meeting March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Notice Agenda. In accordance with Rule Number Twelve of the Rules Governing the Actions of the City Council, Chairwoman Akbarali has called this in a sust- in a sus- I am a Sustainability Committee Council as a whole, meeting to be held at six P M. On Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The meeting will be held at the City of West Haven, three fifty-five Main Street, Third Floor, Council Chambers.
Thank you so much, Stacy. The time is now six oh three. Your Council on Sustainability is now open. Council members present, Councilwoman Garthwaite, Councilwoman Hamilton, and myself, Councilwoman Akbarali, acting as Chair. The first order of business is the E P and Waste Zero is going to come up and present an update report on the Co-Collection Program. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. So Jen Weymouth is also on camera from D E P. You can technically see her, but she is there. So thank you for having me tonight. Uh, and I appreciate you all coming out because I know it's an extra meeting, so I'll, I'll keep this as brief as possible. But we do have some really, really great news, so that's good. Um, the pilot is going well. Um, I wanna, this is sort of what I wanna go over, the, the general waste crisis again, just quickly. Um, why unit-based pricing and why food scraps? Why, you know, why are we doing this? Um, a pilot update, um, some timeline and next steps to, you know, how do you move forward either with this or with something else? You know, what are those next steps? And then some questions and answers. Um, so we'll go first slide. You all know me, sorry. I am Kristen Brown. I am the technical assistance person for D E E P. And again, Jen Weymouth is on the camera, I think. Uh, and you know me from prior meetings, so I don't know that we need a full introduction. I think everybody pretty much here knows me. Um, but I've been doing this for thirty-five years and I really am quite passionate, passionate about garbage. And you are all welcome to attend any Thursday. We have a waste audit. So if you're interested in the trash, um, they, they vary in time. It's usually morning around ten o'clock. I do recommend if you're thinking about it, to do it sooner rather than later because in the warmth, it's not as pleasant. In the cold, you may be chilly, but there's less odor, considerably less odor. But it is really interesting if, if, you know, it's something you're interested in. Um, so click a couple of times through. Um, again, we have a waste crisis, um, in the U S, not just in, uh, in Connecticut or in New England. Uh, and that really is primarily because the number of landfills that we have in the United States has shrunk from over six thousand to just over a thousand today. Uh, the reason is because as landfills close, it's really difficult to site a new landfill. No one wants one in their town. Um, similarly with waste to energy facilities. In the nineteen, nineteen nineties, late eighties, early nineties, um, we built approximately seventy-five waste to energy facilities. Those generally have a thirty-year good life, so they're all over thirty years old today, except one that was built in Florida in twenty fifteen. So all of those are aging and aging rapidly. Um, they can continue for forty years, fifty years, depending on the facility itself, but it really depends on their investors. So if there's more breakdown than there is, you know, profitability, then they're, they're not gonna stay open. So it's hard to say when those may or may not close. You have another large facility in Bridgeport that is taking a, a good bit of your trash now that Mira has, has closed. So that one is, has, you know, shut down on a regular basis, which you might hear about. Uh, and they shut down because they, you know, something goes wrong. They have to wait for maintenance and equipment and parts, um, to get back online. So, um, it wouldn't be surprising if all of the remaining waste to energy facilities are definitely gone. You know, within fifty years, but they're gonna all go offline over the next, um, fifteen years. Uh, so, so as we look at this crisis, you know, what is the answer? If we can't cite another waste energy facility, if we, if it's hard to cite landfills, where does all the trash go that we all make every day in America? And, you know, it has to go someplace. So the objective, I guess, next slide here, um, from D E P is, was to look at pilots that wanted to do two primary programs. Anything relating to food scrap diversion and anything relating to unit-based pricing. I think I showed you this slide last time, but eight percent of all, you know, carbon emissions, uh, from, from food, food waste, rather, um, contributes to eight percent of all global greenhouse gas emissions, which includes everything from vehicles to factories, et cetera. And disproportionately, food scraps contribute to sixty percent of all landfill emissions. So we, we throw away about twenty-two percent food scraps, but yet they, they, um, represent sixty percent of all of those emissions. So they're sort of like the bad guy in the landfill waste. Um, if you go to the next slide, the good news about that is, which again, we've talked about, is food scraps can be reused really in two different ways. Um, well, three, um, you can send them to animal feed, which we talked about, which we don't do with residential food scraps because of, of the material that could be in those food scraps. You know, somebody could put their antifreeze in, you know, accidentally. They could put in bleach or something like that. So, y- you know, even though the animals can reuse certain food, it's hard to provide, you know, make animal feed from residential feedstock. Um, commercial feedstock, restaurants, those are good places where you know that the stream of material is clean. Um, but with residential, you never know what might be inside of the food stock. So we're not going to any kind of animal feed. Um, in this pilot, you were going to anaerobic digestion. Again, anaerobic digestion is, is a great solution because you get both the calories and the energy from that food that you didn't eat. And you also get the nutrients after, after the energy is captured. You have a digestate which can be mixed back in with your compost and create really valuable nutrients for the soil. So you get two byproducts and really nothing bad from, from diverting those food scraps. And the good news is you're taking them out of the landfill. So you're taking them away from a place where they're causing problems and they're emitting carbon emissions and greenhouse gases. And you're moving them into a place where they can do good for, for the environment, for, for the energy consumption and also for our soil. So next.
Hi all, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think you might have muted yourselves.
Oh, so you can't hear me?
She should be able to hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
She's pointing a thumbs up.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so, so the second part of the grant that you applied for was unit-based pricing. Of course, the grant is voluntary, so no one has, has had to comply with either unit-based pricing or the food scraps, but we're giving everyone an opportunity to give it their best try. Um, again, unit-based pricing was part of this grant process because unit-based pricing is the single most effective thing you can do to reduce trash. And that means drawing some attention, some level of attention to the user, providing them some responsibility. And when you do do that, the trash drops by about forty-four percent. Something we're gonna talk about later in the slides is, and Doug may have sent out an invitation to you all already. We would like to invite you all to, on small group tours of some of the places in Massachusetts that do this. Because it is a really, it's a great way to learn, um, about how the residents have adjusted to it. And also, uh, you know, be able to see it for yourselves on the street because you can really see the difference in the waste that's generated. So we're gonna throw out a few different dates to try to accommodate anybody who would want to do that. Uh, and go as a group up there and see a couple of the different communities. It'll give you a chance also to ride the streets and see, you know, neighborhood to neighborhood, how does that compare to West Haven? But also, um, talk to their public officials to find out feedback from them on resident responses as well as, you know, waste reduction and all of that. So you can, you can kind of verify all that we're talking about. Um, but with unit-based pricing, we see about a forty-four percent waste reduction. And when you couple it with food scraps at the curbside, you get down to, um, you know, in the sixty-plus percent diversion rate, which is really where you wanna be because if you do that, you have less material remaining to worry about throwing away and worrying about, worry about getting that off to landfills or, or to waste energy facilities. So, so better materials management was the goal of the pilot. Next. Um, so what's happening? So the good news is, um, when, when you look at voluntary pilots, you're, you've actually probably exceeded everybody's expectations already and you're only six, basically a full sixteen weeks in. Um, it's hard to create a trend, so that's why even last time I was here, it's hard to, you still have the bumps in the road, but we're getting to see some really, really good trend lines, so I'm gonna show you a few different aspects of that. Um, so overall cumulative waste, um, the blue line is where, the dark blue is this year, the light blue is last year. So you're running about eleven and a half percent less waste being thrown away this year as opposed to last year. Um, so that's again, a really good sign when you're talking about a program that really is voluntary for everybody. Uh, so next, and just to put that into comparison, um, you've, the other programs that we have so far, Ansonia is running at about fourteen and a fif- fifteen, almost fifteen percent reduction. So a little bit ahead of you, but, um, but still kind of neck and neck. Uh, they're the only ones that have started for any length of time. Everybody else is pretty new. So I'll, next time I come back, I'll have a little bit more information on the other programs. Um, the other interesting, you know, part of this, and again, this is kind of an early trend line for this, but your overall waste generation is down by about four percent. So Pam isn't here, she's on vacation, the other person who's with me generally. Um, she, she, um, has been answering phone calls, um, I think it's close to a thousand phone calls and emails now. Um, the feedback that she gets from residents are, there are a lot of people who are trying to do it that are saying, you know what, we'll try. I'll try to only fit in two bags and I'll try to put out a green bag and I'll try my best. Um, so from that, we think we're seeing this little bit of overall waste generation decrease, um, which means that people are still producing trash, recycling and food scraps, but they're also thinking a little bit differently about their waste. This is a trend line that it's gonna take a few more months to develop. Um, but it's a good sign that people are thinking about the goodwill, thinking about differently i- in general about what they throw away. Uh, so the first bar there is before, um, the second bar is where you are today, um, based on the waste generated so far, um, from the, the nine weeks of this year is what we've captured here. The comparison, uh, so if you look at the trash, you can, oh, go back. Um, you, if you look at the trash, you can see the trash is, um, was higher, the blue before. The trash is now down at eleven and a half percent. The overall generation, that's both bars in, in total are down. The little green line, which I'll talk about in a minute, is your food scraps. And then the, the orange is your recycling, which has also significantly increased, almost overall total about sixty percent. So next slide. So this is your recycling, um, chart, your diversion chart. So we've coupled both recycling and food waste together in this year, which is your twenty twenty-three number, which is the blue. Um, recycling was the only option last year, so we're looking at recycling last year, um, is the orange. So recycling is up from fourteen and a half, fifteen, almost fifteen percent up to twenty-four percent. That is an enormous increase. It's, in fact, it could be the biggest increase I've personally ever seen other than in a pay-as-you-throw community, a full-on pay-as-you-throw community. So I have not ever seen an increase like this. I've been doing it for thirty-five years. And when I say never seen anything like it, I mean, never seen anything close. So some of the programs I've worked on are switching from dual stream to single stream, which was a big deal for the recycling industry. We got a big bump, but that big bump in recycling points was going at one point seven to three point four percentage points up. You're up ten, so that's really, really big. Um, the, that was probably the largest bump that I saw over time. Um, another program was called Recycle Bank, uh, that, that was implemented in a lot of different communities. They got about two percentage point bumps. And, and so this is really, really high, so super pleased with that, which means two things are happening. You are getting some food waste out of the waste stream, but you're also, you've also increased the amount of recyclables that people are, are putting out. So just the overall education, the overall thinking about this has changed the behavior. Um, next slide. Just to put that into perspective, um, you guys were the red line, um, last year, whatever, over, over the last several years, you were down in the red, um, red line, and that represents about fourteen and a half, almost fifteen percent, um, recycling. Uh, and then you're currently running equal to Farmington, um, Milford, you know, in the West Hartford range. So you've really, really bumped the number for diversion up, so you gotta be super, super duper proud of that. Um, so next is your overall green bag capture rate and your food waste capture rate. So this one's a little bit complicated. Um, the green line represents the green bags that we capture and the weight of those green bags. Capture rate in general means that we take of the waste that you generate each wake, week. Twenty-two percent of that is the max, kind of what we consider that, that would be a hundred percent capture if you got all of that. Twenty-two percent of the overall waste stream. So we use that number as a benchmark. Um, capture rate is typical for, um, all, the way that EPA looks at recycling of any given commodity material. Um, so you're capturing right now about twenty percent of available food scraps in the waste stream, um, which is also really great for a voluntary pilot that's only really technically been going total seven, seventeen weeks. Um, so the yellow line is clean material. So what we're doing is two things. We weigh all of the green bags that are captured every week. Um, and then we also do a waste audit or an audit, and this is the part that you could join in if it interests you. Um, we open up the green bags and we weigh out the, the part that is contaminated. So, um, you know, part of this is educating people. We wanna make sure that the food waste is clean. That's going into the anaerobic digester, which I sent you those videos. If you, I don't know if you can play those or how hard that is, but I sent it to your phone, but you can maybe think about that while I'm talking. Um, the, uh, the, the, so the yellow line represents the clean food. And the, the difference between the yellow line and the green bag is what is contaminated. Um, some of it's recyclable, most of it's recyclable material. Um, mostly what we find is, it, so let me just sort of take you through the lines. The first part, you see your big bump in green bags. Um, that was the first couple of weeks, what we were finding is, um, we had green bags that had just garbage in them. So most people either were bucking the system, which I doubt, or just didn't understand. So they were putting regular garbage in the green bags, so, so that's why I think the green bag number is so high there. Um, and the yellow bag number was the, the clean material we were getting out of the green bag. So you can see the spread was really big. Um, we did, started doing the curbside coaching and the spread got closer. So the level of contamination significantly, um, got significantly better after that first coaching. And it actually continues to get a little bit better each week. Uh, so the contamination level right now is running around twenty-six percent of the food capture. That is also kind of in line with most of the pilot programs, uh, across the country, really. Um, but we are seeing seventeen percent from Middletown, so they're doing a little better. And Sonya is now down to around twenty-one percent. So we feel like with continued coaching, that that number, that will get closer and closer. Um, so it's actually pretty good for first time out. If you look at the contamination rate, rate of all recyclables in the U S, it's running around eighteen to twenty percent. If you look at the contamination rate of food scraps in Europe, that's running around twenty percent. So you're actually not too far away. Um, this is curbside, source-separated food scraps. So you're, you know, you're right in there and it's only been sixteen weeks, so, so I'm super encouraged by this also. Um, next one, yeah, so this kind of gives you an idea about capture rate. And I looked at the EPA national capture rate, capture rates for every single commodity that they itemize. But, um, you can see here, you're at about nineteen percent. And just take glass, for instance, we've been marketing, you know, to, to capture a hundred percent of glass for thirty years. And we're only at twenty-five percent. You're already almost at twenty percent of food and you just did this for sixteen weeks. So it is a, it is really a good capture rate and hopefully that puts that into a little perspective for you. So next slide. So, so then where do you go from here? Because, you know, here you are and there's, there's still- Because, you know, here you are and there's, there's still a long way to go if this is something that you want to pursue. So, so the one thing is, we still don't have technically a, an absolute quote yet back. But your current waste contract is, is expiring and it can be extended, but the question is at what price? Based on some of the es- the estimates that we have, which are probably pretty close, you can see that first year bar. We think over and above your current tipping fee, which your baseline tip fee here includes recyclables and trash. Over and above that current tipping fee, you're going to be over that five hundred thousand dollars the first year. But that's just going to continue to increase every year, over today's million dollars, every year as the tipping fee goes up. And again, it's not likely that the tipping fee comes down. Because it's kind of like when you buy a TV and the, the technology is brand new, you buy some big giant TV and it's super expensive. And two years later, it's much cheaper because the capacity is, is greater for that. In this case, it's the reverse, it's not going to get cheaper because unless we decide, you know, to put a landfills everywhere, i- it's just not going to go down. So, so managing the materials is really the only way to get a check in, into what we're doing with our disposal costs. So that's kind of what you're looking at over the next ten years. It amounts to over ten years, again, this is still an estimate of about eleven point five million dollars over the, over the ten-year period. So it's basically a million dollars a year, obviously starting out lower because the tipping fees are rising over time. So, the, the thing also about the unit-based pricing of food scraps, and I know that that's a big jump from where you are today, to making your pro- per- program permanent. But if you did do that, to put into perspective what that means from a carbon emissions point of view, MTCE. Is, it's equal to, when you think about actions that the city can do on their own, they can put in electric vehicles. They can, you know, try to reduce traffic light energy, they can, you know, reduce employee commutes, which you've started to do. Because some people do Zoom instead of coming to work, but in a city, most people still have to be here at their job. So all of those carbon emissions combined, based on the national average, is the, the twenty-two, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand MTCE would wipe out all of those emissions. It's like making yourself neutral. So that's, to put it into perspective from an environmental point of view, what is, what is twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand MTCE really mean? And that's basically what it means. So it's a really, really, really big impact. So not only is, is there a savings, there's an impact. The savings, again, is part of what we want to go through in these next steps. But if you, if you, that eleven point five million dollars would be basically wiped out if you moved to this program. Because you would offset those savings with a unit-based pricing slash food scrap collection program. So next, I'll go. So next steps for, for you all. Well, throughout the rest of the month of March and throughout April, we want to do community and stakeholder outreach and feedback sessions. And feedback in different ways, so not just sessions, I'll, I'll have a whole slide on that, so I'll do that in a minute. We also, DEEP has two requirements, an April seventh deadline and a May eighth deadline. The April seventh deadline is simply a letter that you intend to develop a plan, not necessarily implement it. But develop a plan to look at what unit-based pricing and food scraps could look at for the, for the citywide. So again, that's just a letter to, of intent to develop a plan. May eighth is you submit that plan. And then from May eighth to July one, you have to kind of figure out, are we going to do this or are we not? So next slide. So what we planned for, so far, for community outreach and feedback, we're going to begin talking to schools. So there are eight schools on the schedule so far. So we'll, we'll, we'll do various dif- different outreach to the schools from presentations to, well, I think in some of them, there's like a, where the, all the kids come to the auditorium, learn about food waste, learn about recycling, learn about waste in general. So we'll, we'll be doing that in eight of the schools, again, trying to do it in the remainder of the schools as well. We're going to have town hall public discussions, the first one is tomorrow night. We haven't, we have some tentative dates for others, but we're open to what you all think about timing. We'd love, obviously, for any of you to attend, because that would be helpful. But opening it up to the public to get feedback on this program, but also ideas on any type of program at all. Because part of this process is modeling out, what are some scenarios that you can, you know, you, you can take as a city to mitigate that eleven point five million dollar impact that you're about to see? So what are some things you can do? And that's, that, that will be part of the modeling, but we want to get feedback from everybody here and from anybody in, in town. We're also working on, obviously, tours to, to go see other communities that already have unit-based pricing in place. Another thing that came up in the conversation that you weren't on, on Wednesday, but is the idea, maybe we'll do something with churches. Maybe we can target specific, you know, some of the larger churches at, at minimum, to where right after church service, there could maybe be an announcement. We could be out front with coffee and, you know, sort of a demonstration, again, to get feedback, finding, finding out what people are finding, what they're thinking about it, if they're doing it. What they think we should do in the future. And then also, we can do some additional meetings on Zoom if it's, if it's inconvenient for people to get to some of the public locations. Olivia's been trying to organize meeting dates in different parts of the city, so it makes it easy for people to get to those. Different days of the week too, so, you know, Mondays might not work for people, so we're not doing them all on Mondays. We're trying to do something Monday, something on a Tuesday, Wednesday and a Thursday, again, evening, but trying to make it as convenient as possible. I think that's my last, yeah, and this is just a timeline that's too small for me to see, so I can't read it. But basically it says what I just said, as far as the deadlines go. So that, that's it, that's where, where we are. So next is really questions and answers from you all.
Thank you very much, Esther, I do have a couple of questions. Couple meaning a lot, but I'll start with the first one. Will we be receiving larger, well, any type of recycling can that will be exceptionally, exceptionally larger than the ones that we already have? Because I am finding myself recycling a lot more than I have been, but not having the space to put everything in.
Right, so really great question. And as part of the modeling, that's probably something that we could look at or should look at. Doug won't be here, so, so I'll point that out to you. But, yeah, definitely on the list of something to look at, so great question.
Perfect. Diapers, I have three children, two are which are in diapers. I hate throwing them out because I know what happens to them in landfills, it takes many, many years for them to disintegrate. Is there going to be a separate type of disposal for the diapers in the future with this program?
So, also really great question. It won't be in the near term, so your children will be out of di- diapers, however. That, I, I do believe that if the, the co-collection concept does work and you, you end up doing it with food scraps, you kind of have an unlimited, it's unlimited after that. So there is technology if you, to capture the diapers. So maybe your diaper bag is light pink, or maybe it's light blue, depending on the child, and you tie it up. It could be captured in this kind of system. The, the technology that does the diapers actually separates, they create energy from the discards. And then they're able to recycle the, the plastic material inside the diaper, which apparently is incredibly expensive, which is why they cost so much at the store. But it's really expensive and difficult to, to make. So I think the technology is in England right now, but that's, that's like, that's part of how do we, how do we manage this waste and get closer and closer to zero?
Absolutely.
Great question, and not before your kids are out of diapers.
No, but something in the future, hopefully. Okay, perfect. And then after the program is over, the pilot program, how will we be receiving bags and what would the cost be? And is it going to be a manufacturer within the DEP or outside the DEP?
So, that's again, part of your modeling. There's going to be different models on whether they're free bags, whether you pay for the bags, at what price you pay for the bags. All of that would be modeled, as far as what manufacturer, because I know that's an issue here with me. You can pick a manufacturer, so it, it does not necessarily have to be us. Right, yeah, I think Doug already did an RFP, but you could do another RFP. You don't, it does not necessarily have to be us. We're sort of an expert at this part, we're an expert at, at what we're doing now. Not that we're not an expert in managing the programs, but there are other people that would manage a program for you if you don't want to work with us, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. And then with extra bags, say bags that I purchased a while ago, I still would like to use those since I have bought them. Will there be any type of program that will allow us to use our own bags? Say we put a sticker on them that are part of the program? Because I do find myself, in my family, not being able to fit everything into one bag. So I try to kind of disperse it into two separate bags, but I don't like to waste the bags that I've already bought. So how would we go about doing that?
So, good, good question to write down, I'll try to write down, write it down for public when we start on the public sessions. And when we really start to work with you guys on what that final plan looks like. So there have been communities that have said they would, they would offset that in some way. But it, it's kind of up to you how you do that, because obviously everybody's different, some people might have a lot.
Right.
Some people don't have any, so how do you account for that? The sticker part could work, but then you don't want to game the system either, so how long do you do that?
You don't want to go over the amount, right.
So it, it's a little, yeah, so it's not an easy question to answer, but, but another good question.
Absolutely. And then when we started this program, I know a lot of residents and my constituents, if they weren't following the program exact or they weren't following it at all, they were, were getting stickers put on their trash receptacles, saying that they weren't following the program. And they felt like they were being forced. Are we able to stop that from happening again?
So you're probably going to still sticker, because you're not going to want to not pick up their trash either. So you're going to, there's going to be a grace period. And stickers are the, you know, welcome to think of other ideas, but that is hands down the best way to communicate to residents. I mean, it used to be, in, you know, when I started implementing these programs really early on, almost everyone just read the basic newspaper, that was the local. Nobody, like, it's really hard to reach people.
Right.
So, so the best way is really at the, at the home. So all recycling compliance, anything, any of these type programs is usually done right there, on the can if possible, like, in front of you.
Right, I think the problem I was coming in contact with is they were taking it as a negative connotation, instead of saying, oh, they're just reminding me. That they were taking it more of, they were being forced to do it.
Right.
So maybe we could word the stickers differently?
Yeah, so we've been trying to word them differently as we go, so the last one was a little different, so, yeah, so we can play around with that. The other communities that are also doing this are also trying different wording.
Right.
We actually have two separate notices now, one of them is green, one of them is pink, I think one means you're not doing it right.
Okay.
Green one is like a good job.
Even if someone isn't doing it right, we should just make sure that we label it in more of a positive manner. Instead of having someone feel like they're forced to do it or they're doing something bad, in a way.
Yeah, so that, and, and again, sort of part of the planning, if you're going to move forward with it, maybe we need a little team that helps with the marketing.
Yeah, I agree.
With how it goes out, and branded and sort of, you know, there's a lot of things you can do. You're at, you've got a clean slate, your trash prices are about to go crazy, you know, what is it and how is it? Do you want to frame this new, this new materials management system?
Right, right, absolutely. And then for small businesses, are we going to have small businesses be a part of this program in the future? Or can we add that to our plan? How would that work?
So right now, you don't pay for small businesses. Yeah, we would add it somewhat to the plan, right, to the overall plan, yeah.
Okay, that's great. And then for different types of materials, such as metal or tires, I know that we are starting a recycling space in West Haven for larger objects like mattresses and tires, paint, et cetera. For smaller objects that we don't want to throw away or we're not able to recycle, is there going to be a type of bag we can put those in?
Not for curbside, that would be.
That would be, okay.
Yeah, and it. Yeah, and it, it could be also maybe, again, the good thing about this program is it creates a lot of new solutions. One thing that they do a lot in Massachusetts where they have these programs is they have a swap shop. You know, where you bring stuff and then other people come and get it, because people who do crafts, people, I mean, think about all the stuff you throw, like, that, that you have to throw away. Because it technically isn't recyclable, but you know it's really cool and someone else could do something with it. So there are a lot of programs like that. So again, this is kind of the beginning of a new slate.
Yeah.
It depends on how you look at it, like you, the, the sky is kind of the limit, but you, I would say that's something you should look at. It may not have to be objective one in the plan, but something for the future.
Absolutely. And then you already mentioned schools and churches, could we implement that plan to the schools as soon as?
Yeah, so I think you're doing some now, and, but that's definitely.
That would be great.
You'd want to be a part of, not necessarily the co-collection portion.
Right.
But somehow, yes, for sure, every, yeah, yeah, definitely, a, a short-term plan on what to do based on the grant requirements. But as part of that, a really big list on, you know, what, what could, what, what could this look like if we really went all the way?
Yeah, that would be amazing, that would really change things. And then churches, there's many different denominations in West Haven. And I know that, you know, my church would probably need certain permissions from the archdiocese. But how would we go about talking to these churches? Do we make an announcement or would the DEP do that?
You could do, I, I guess you could certainly, I mean, maybe it'll be printed in the paper. If churches reached it back out to Doug's office or, you know, to the office, we could start scheduling stuff. Yes, some churches are going to have different requirements, but.
Right.
We did talk to, there were a few churches that actually put up a little display that we talked to. But Pam, again, Pam Roach from, from the SCROG Regional Group, they also have a grant. So she has some funding to spend time on, stuff like that.
Right.
And then you guys have some funding for a, a person who is Luke, if you haven't met him. And he is also available to go reach out to churches, finish reaching out to the schools that we don't have so far, et cetera, yeah, so.
That's amazing. And does anyone else on the committee have any questions? Councilman Garth Wade?
Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. I have a question about, I missed that recycling.
Workshop, what's in, what's out?
And, and it, there was one slide that had, it had the food scraps and it had this arrow that said Bright Feeds. And I'm like, what is Bright Feed? So I Googled it and it's, it's some sort of.
Animal feed.
Yeah, so I, I'm wondering, if we're not sending it to animal feed now, why did we say that we were sending it to Bright Feed?
I think the slide maybe, I, I don't know that slide, specifically Jen might know it, it, it might have been a little, yeah.
Slides are outdated because they're only able to take product they know what's in it.
Right.
So that's, they can only take industrial, they can't take post-consumer.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're taking manufacturing byproduct.
Okay.
They're not able to take what's in it.
Said the curbside, because there could be allergens or contamination they can't give to an animal.
Right, I just, I was curious. It's like my little antenna's on like.
That slide Jen might know.
Jen is nodding her head, yes, so I think I got that one right.
Or she's having trouble.
I, I, I missed what you said, Councilman, in the beginning, in terms of which slide deck you're referring to or what presentation you're referring to.
What's in, what's out, she knows what's in, what's out. So maybe there's something in there that points there, I don't know. I don't remember seeing.
Yeah, maybe she was offering that up as an option for some commercial, some commercial businesses are taking their, 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 their products, their, their byproducts to Bright Feed. But yeah, I, I, I'm pretty sure that residential is not accepted.
Yeah.
Residential food scraps are not accepted at Bright Feed.
Yeah, and, and I think, again, as part of this overall plan, you have a plan, suggestions for restaurant, I mean, you know, this is a rollout over time, right? But as restaurants become more interested, these are options for them, obviously, any kind of food processor, don't know if you have that in, in West Haven, you might have a fishery or something, but yeah, that could go. You know, just think, I think, thinking differently about the waste all around, and, and another part is donation to residents, I mean, other people. You know, so food donation is important, you can't take the food scraps from your own plate and donate it. Nor can you take the restaurant food scraps from someone's plate. But you can take restaurant material that isn't really bad yet and donate it. You can take school food that isn't, you know, that hasn't been touched by people, us, right? And so that's another thing to build into it as, as part of this overall change and thinking about what you're doing. And, and that's going to happen naturally in the kitchen. So the, the thing about unit-based pricing is, is if people get an allotment of free bags, say, and then, then it is mandatory that they purchase them after that. Or even if they have to begin purchasing right away, depending on however you, you do it. They're going to think about things that they buy too, they're going to think differently. Because, you know, the food bag may cost twenty-five cents, the trash bag may cost eighty, but they still, they're going to think differently about everything that they do. So they might buy differently. Or, you know, or just for me, another fun thing that you could do, I'm, I cook, so I think about it all the time. But I have a scrap bucket for everything and I put lots of it in the freezer, even when we're done eating dinner, because it's our own family. You know, I put beans, I put leftover stuff in the freezer and then I turn it into soup. Because, you know, soup in the winter is great and it's distilled with vitamins and even if I just make the stock from it. So, I, you know, I just think people will overall think differently when they, when they now all of a sudden have a little bit of that signal that, okay. okay, this is my allotment, if I go over, it's gonna feel like it's costing more, I wanna, I wanna go within my limit, kind of, yeah. I mean, it's actually super exciting. I mean, the whole thing is super exciting, I know it seems kind of scary, I get over, overly excited, but like, I, this is a fun project, this is great. Yeah, real change.
Questions?
I, I have one more, but I'll let somebody else go, because I'm trying to figure out how to word it.
Anyone else on the committee have any questions? Councilwoman Hamilton?
So recycling and everything is very new to me, and I think we're in the habit of, so every time we get ready to throw something, we, you could see us pause and make a decision where it goes and scold someone if we don't think it's right. Um, you spoke of, um, like, um, uh, like, what do you call it, like fabrics or something? Not going, of course it would not go in the green, and we don't really want it in the orange either.
Orange, right.
So what do you do with something, I work for a clothing closet, so I understand like collecting clothes and stuff. What do you do for those textiles that are just not worthy of anything? Like, where, what do I do? Because I do have a small pile, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, so in some, it, it's a little bit different.
It's a rag.
Depending, yeah, depending on where you are, um, there are a few programs that could be implemented. Um, Goodwill will actually take most of your stuff, even if it isn't good, because not all of it goes back into the store for resale. They do have outlets where they bulk together sheets that are ripped and, you know, stained and, and, you know, various whatever things that aren't great, because the material itself can still be recycled. So it can be made into carpet padding or insulation, or, you know, there's all different uses for it, not necessarily wearable clothing. So, so it's a really good question, we should check with local Goodwill here, or any other thrift stores that collect. Um, usually Goodwill is because they're national, or Salvation Army because they're national. They have the ability to group that stuff, and then they sell it off to other buyers that pay, you know, pay something for it, to use it, yeah. So, but good question, and again, sort of all part of how you develop the plan. Um, one thing in those slides suggested perhaps a, a volunteer committee, an appointed committee, you know, something to go through this process with you, whether it's a volunteer citizens group or a mix of a volunteer citizens group and some appointed committee from, you know, that's appointed by council to actually help vet and go through some of the ideas. Um, so that's another way that might make it easier for you, because it's, it's a big task.
Now, this is kind of new to us here in the US, because I have other friends that, you know, like Sweden and other places where they've been doing this forever.
Right, right, yeah. So I, when I was first out of college, I worked in Europe in the waste industry, um, for several years, and, and I'm old. So this was thirty-five years ago, and we are doing what they were doing, we're starting to do that. So that's the continuum that we're on, and we're, we are definitely behind, so.
And my last thing for now is, um, I wish we would have, um, targeted the children a little earlier. There's nothing better than a child saying, no, that's not where it goes, it goes here. Because I remember when we first started recycling, and I didn't have small children in the house, but other people would tell me that their children taught them how to recycle. So I'm glad we're going into the schools. Um, I, I just wish we would have did it a little earlier, and maybe we wouldn't have gotten some of the pushback that we hear out there.
Yeah, so that's another good point, we.
I mean, we can't turn the clock back, but I'm glad we're going into the schools.
Yeah, we did start a little while back, but you had to get through the school board or superintendent, you know, we had to go through a little bit.
Okay, I understand.
However, we have, we did, the other people that are starting after you are benefiting from that because we're already in implementation plan, actually talking to, so it won't necessarily be in sync, but it'll be closer than, than this, but, but, yeah. And we are, we were supposed to go last week or the week before, but snowstorm, what happened? Some, to, to some of them, last week, we had to be canceled, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just one more question. When our, our materials, our food scraps go to the anaerobic digester, are we paying them for that service? Or are they paying us because they're getting a product?
So right now, in the US, you pay them.
Okay.
Um, it's a new industry, so over time, those costs, right now, it's still gonna be significantly lower than your tip fee, you know, which is gonna be around one ten, one twenty a ton, it's gonna be around sixty, sixty-five. Um, but over time, more competition there will also bring that cost down. The other positive thing about that cost is as these facilities build, they're willing to do long-term, like thirty-year contracts. So then you get a long-term fixed cost, where your trash is going crazy, your digestion cost is more fixed, and you have, um, you know, you probably have a CPI increase in there, but it's more fixed. The other option is you can still de-bag and then perhaps do an aerated static pile, which is a way of, of composting your food waste, which you piloted here. Um, so that's something you could de-bag, and the food could come back to you, and then your tip fee is whatever you make it. Or maybe your tip fee yourself is free, but you, you allow others to come into your system to help offset the cost of running the system. Because the tip fee covers running it, there's obviously would still be cost to run it, but, but you could, that, that could be a way to offset the cost too. Um, the, the, I guess, positive thing with digestion is you, you are, you do create energy from the food. Just ta- sending it straight to compost does not create energy. Um, you could get to a point where, where you're going to a digester, and then they're, they're paying you to take the digestate back, so you're offsetting a little, little bit, because they don't really want it, because they're not composting it, but you can compost it with your leaves. So there's, again, like, this is the beginning of a, of a, of a real shift in, I think, the way America looks at their garbage, because there's not any more space, so, yeah. So we, we, we don't know where it'll go, but it should come down, and, and there are alternative solutions. We're, you're losing Doug, so that's kind of, hopefully whoever comes in there has some, some good ideas too.
A green belt.
I just want to say one more thing, is there, I, I really want to see our residents paid nothing for the bags. Like, I guess that's something we all have to figure out.
Yeah, so as part of the modeling, we're gonna model several different ways to do it. Like, free, but pay after a certain amount, because you can't have unlimited free. Um, and then, and or, yeah, I mean, there's all different ways. And then the amount you pay after the free could also vary. So there's so many different iterations, I didn't want to put ninety spreadsheets up there. So I feel like we need, if we go through a little bit of engagement and hone in on maybe what we want to see, then we can start, as part of this, start modeling it for you, so you can look.
And councilwoman, I just want to tell you that they do recycle at Goodwill. Yeah, also H and M, H and M will take care of textiles and recycle them. And you get a coupon if you want fast fashion, which nobody wants fast fashion at this table.
But H and M will, will do it, and, and another, I mean, I think there's all different ways that you could engage even perhaps with any kind of local, um, chain here that sells, like a chain store, fast fashion. You know, maybe there's a way that if you collect it, they take it back too, because they're competing with an H and M. So there's all, I, I think there's lots of different things you can do.
Thank you, councilwoman. I'm gonna open up to the whole council now, does anyone on the council, Councilwoman Donovan?
Thank you again for being here, uh, always. Um, so the orange bags right now being used, and first of all, I'm doing this program, I, I don't want to sound like, I don't want to say it's fun, because I don't want my life to be like, it's that boring where I'm, trash is very interesting. But I, I am finding it interesting to do. Um, now, the orange bags, right now, they're being used for data purposes only?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, well, two things, I think they are having a little bit of an effect, because when, when residents.
Call in, and I don't know if, if it also happened when they read the directions for those that haven't called in. But again, about a thousand people have had phone calls with Pam, and, and they'll say, oh, okay, I'll, I'll try to get into two bags, I'll try. So it was sort of the idea that let's cre- start creating a measuring cup for trash, and bringing, you know, a realization that, you know, this might, that, 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 this, this is limited, you know? For instance, it's fifty bucks worth of free bags probably for your average resident that didn't have to go out and buy bags. And if it was my house, I'd get those bags and be like, okay, guys, this is what we're gonna do, because they were free, I wouldn't have to go to the store and buy them. And, y- you know, it, again, for me, I'm a little odd, so it would be a challenge, I'd be like, oh, okay, we can try to do that. Um, so that's what we're hoping is happening with some people, and I think that's that little four percent overall behavior change that we might be seeing. Again, it's early trend, um, so I'm hoping some people are taking that challenge. Others aren't for sure, they're using their orange bag, and then they're also putting out some black and white bags. Some of them are using two orange bags, and then a black bag, or then a white bag. Other people are randomly putting three orange bags and, you know, no other, you know, so it's hard to know. Everybody's doing it a little differently, yeah.
Right, so, so right now, the orange bags are just, whether it's two, three, four, whatever it is, um, it's just being used for data purposes right now. So when the program is over, my question, I guess, would be, and I agree with the food scrap, because the, the weight of that, which I have another question with the food scrap, um, that, that does make a significant difference, um, even bringing up the bag. Um, so once this pilot program is over, it's possible, you won't be collecting data after that, once the pilot program is over, correct?
I mean, no, not data for this.
Right, so what I'm saying is, we can go back to just using regular trash bags, but maybe the scrap bags is what we need to focus on, right? Because that's what we're trying to do in this pilot program, correct?
Yeah, so that's where you get, where it gets a little bit tricky.
So there, there is the option that you just separate food scraps, you wouldn't even necessarily need a green bag, but you would need a separate collection route to pick it up. So, so there's a cost of a truck, a route, the ca- the carbon emissions of the truck going around. If you're gonna co-collect, um, the green bag with the orange bag in the same truck to save on all of those, you know, collection costs, which are the biggest part of the cost of, of, of a food program. And it goes to a facility, right now, Wallingford, where it's separated. Um, the separation, in order for that to be cost-effective, the bags have to be standard. If you come to do a waste audit, you'll see what I mean. The, the black and white bags are broken everywhere, people grab those green bags, you can't sustain that, it can't. And you also probably can't automate it, because the automation is through, um, optical sortation. So the automated eye, if you were to automate it, would look for green bags. But if anything is green inside the broken black and white bags, they would also, it would also be shoving that aside as food waste. So a green package, um, a green cheeto bag, cheetos are orange, but you know, a- any kind of green inside of there would, would set off the system. So I don't think you could cost-effectively collect it. You could look at a separate collection, it's something else we could model, um, and what that would cost. But the cost of running all that material over this system just to get the green food bags, they weigh a lot, but there are less of them because they're heavy, you have a lot of clutter that would make the system, I think, not cost-effective.
I would still say use the scrap bags.
Right.
Separately than the orange bags.
Right.
And you can use the white bags, green bag, whatever the people have got. I've got boxes of tra- regular trash bags that are, it's on hold right now because we're doing this program. I bought them, you know, Costco, so, you know, you don't get ten bags, you get a thousand. But, so the scrap, and I'm using the scrap now, while I'm talking about that, scrap bags should go out weekly, even though there's three eggshells in it?
Um, no, I mean, if you, no, absolutely not, I mean, if you have no problem saving it.
Somebody asked me that, because I, I feel so, I got one banana peel, I, I said, no, I, I wait for it to get significantly heavy, you know, to the point where, so I, I could put it out, okay, so that's not a, that's not a big problem. Which I got, somebody said the green sticker, and I felt like I won an award, I got a green sticker. Um, but, so, so that was my whole thing, was when this program is over, if we go, if we decide not to use the orange bags and have to worry about people paying for those, but we, we pay for the, you know, the green scrap bags, that's pretty much is what this program is doing, is trying to separate the scrap food, the waste food, correct? From, from everything, and I know you said, you know, I, I didn't mean to put the green bags inside the white bag. What I'm saying is, I got two white bags now, and now I still got my green bag I'm putting in there. So that truck that comes.
Is still picking up the trash, green plus black and white.
Yeah.
It's something.
And that, that can't be brought to Wallingford?
So it's something we can model.
But the, I'm afraid that the cost of separating it starts to get really big, one, and two, it is, it, it's hard to do. So again, you can walk up on the sort table, we have to make an appointment to do that, you can't just show up, because we have, there's safety protocols, but you could walk up and see, the belt moves pretty quickly, the green bags get hidden under all the clutter from the, the black and white bags basically break in the truck, most of them, they break open, and so all the trash is everywhere. So you can imagine, it's everywhere, and then your green bag is in there, but it's not just your trash, it's a bunch of trash all on top of it. It's really, it's probably prohibitive, you pro- you have to standardize it and create a way for the bags to basically not break through the system.
These orange bags are not breaking in the truck?
No, basically not, ba- breaking in the truck, right, yeah, it's, yeah.
Even though it mixed in with the white and the green?
Right, and ne- and neither are the green bags, basically, yeah, yeah.
The scrap bags?
Yeah. Yeah, so when you look at the systems in Europe, they, they have a standard specified bag, because it can't, it, it, the clutter and the cost is, it's too much to overcome. So we can look and ask country if they would give you a price to see what that looks like in the model. Um, but I think it would be cost prohibitive to do it, yeah.
And, and I think the other question I have, I think, you can actually answer this. I have somebody that has like old shoes that are just not where, soles are gone, they're missing, they don't know what to do with them, and, you know, so.
So Goodwill and.
Goodwill does take them still?
Yeah, and they. Yeah, they partner with.
They have boxes too that you could put in there.
They have, yeah, they're all over the place.
Oh, those boxes?
And there's other ones, there's purple heart or different, um, usually national.
Yeah, so the, those actually go to Nike, Nike has, uh, they turn them into basketball courts, the padding that goes under the court to give it a cush. If you think about it, it makes sense. They're shoes to courts.
Would that be something you're absolutely not supposed to throw out in the trash?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would, yes, if you can, you'd get it to a good.
But would it still be part of the program if someone were to throw out those materials, or what would happen to that?
So if they threw it away, they'd throw it into the trash, and it would go into the trash, it would go to the incinerator, right.
So it wouldn't be like separated, okay.
In the future, could you collect your food, your, your clothing through, um, huh, I think you're trying this? Um, he's, we're playing around with it at the facility. Um, it, it, you, it, we have to make sure that it comes out clean, or, or you lose a lot of that value. Um, and you wouldn't want to destroy all these beautiful things that are still wearable, you know, so we're playing around with different ideas with.
We're looking at methods for doing curbside collection for textiles.
Oh, great, okay.
To, to make that easier, right. But, a little, again, kind of like the diaper thing, maybe a little, a little bit down the road. But again, yeah, I mean, it's like, it is a really fun challenge.
And would we be able to have some sort of list maybe on your website that would separate items so that people know what are the best things to throw away in the trash, as opposed to donating them? Because a lot of people, they don't want to have to go to the Goodwill, or they're just in a rush and they need to throw something out. Would there be, you know, absolutely do not throw metal in, you know, these bags?
So there's the go-to what's in, what's out website, so you can see, and it will pretty much lead you to what to do with anything. Um, again, it's, might mean holding on to it until you can get to the Goodwill, or, um, you know, w- waiting a couple of weeks, it's not, but, yeah.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Donovan, you all set?
I'm all set, yes.
Councilwoman O'Connor?
Hi, um, I just have an FYI, and then I do have a question. In the past seven days, I'm still getting a lot of, um, anti-feedback. There's still people that are very adamant, they don't want to do it, they don't have enough time, it's, it's something being pushed on them. So in my opinion, I think the education aspect of meeting people in places like church and other places might be a good thing, but there's still gonna be people that are gonna be crabby and, and really angry that you've shown up there. Um, my second question is, I have, I have the cool house, um, my son and his friends are all in their twenties. Um, people of that age are big consumers, it's the very first time they have their own money and they can buy what they want. There is tons and tons of packaging. I don't know if you have the answer to this, but it seems like everything's falling on the consumer. Is any part of the government going to the manufacturers and saying, you need to use less packaging? Let's face it, I also have a grandson, by the time you take a toy out of the package, there's more packaging than there is toy.
Right.
Yeah, so I was gonna let Jen do that, do you want to do that for us? So there is a bill you can absolutely support for extended producer responsibility, which is exactly what you're saying. I don't know if she can hear okay, or.
Uh, somehow my audio cut out, I can, I cannot hear you, Kristen, but I, um, I'd love to jump in and talk quickly about, um, HB six-six-four, I'm sorry, HB six-six-six-four. Um, and that is, um, the governor's bill, and it has a whole bunch of, uh, different aspects. One of them is extended producer responsibility, uh, for packaging. Um, and it creates a stewardship organization of, um, the producers of products and packaging, um, where they would be, then be responsible for funding, um, recycling programs. Um, and so that, uh, alleviates the cost of, um, Um, and so that, uh, alleviates the cost of, um, recycling on the municipalities and that transfers that cost to the producers of the, the materials. Um, so that's a really, um, key component of, um, you know, saving municipalities money and, and, um, creating that, that responsibility on the producer's side.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You all set, Councilman O'Connor?
I am, thank you.
Councilman Donovan?
Hi, so I'm going to get away from green bags and orange bags and white bags for a minute. I just want to talk to you about some dates and, and, um, costs. So you had one slide that talked about we have to develop, um, a program by the beginning of April, which is like three weeks away, and then something submitted to DEEP in May. Who, who's compiling that, that proposal?
So the first date is April, I think, eighth. I'm not looking at this slide.
You said seventh.
So, yeah, and that one is a letter just saying we're going to develop a plan. Uh, and then the next date is May eighth, um, and that is you've developed a plan. So in the, in this in-between time, um, Doug isn't here, but with Commissioner McCarthy and myself and Olivia and people at DEEP, we will be working on a weekly basis on different options on what that plan could look like. It could be that when you, um, submit the plan to DEEP, um, again, it's a plan to do a permanent program. It doesn't mean you're saying yes to doing a permanent program. It's just a plan. I, I foresee the plan to have probably three different pathways. Like, we want to do some, like, it's going to say, we want to do something permanent. This is op- this is pathway one, two, and three. Maybe there's even four. Um, and this is something as a council from the eighth until probably July one because your program technically ends the, the tenth of August. Um, you know, you can, you, you have from the eighth of May to July one to sort of say, do we want to, or what, what version of this are we going to do, if any? You don't have to do anything. Um, but yeah, so the two dates that you have now are just, um, your permanent, your, your letter of intent to develop a plan, that comes up soon, and then your actual plan development, which again will be a couple of different pathways forward as I see it. Because that way you all can debate and go back and forth on those pathways. In order to produce those pathways, that's why we want to have some stakeholder meetings for residents. And again, things we can do is post that on your own, uh, Facebook pages. Um, we'll post it on the community forums. We'll try to get as many people into these general community sessions as possible, even if we have to do some of them on Zoom. Um, just again, to get feedback from residents to help residents understand. So that process is going to happen sort of in conjunction of, um, working with, um, Tom and Olivia and, and DEEP on some of these general pathways on some of the modeling for those.
Because, because I know what would be important to me, and I think, um, you know, you don't have the data yet, but I think another slide or another chart would be, okay, here's, you know, you identified it's about a million dollars more a year if we continue our traditional trash program that we have, right?
Right.
So what's the cost to implement pathway one, two, three, or four? And is it more, is it less, is it even? Um, you know, I know there are other benefits, right, to the program. But I think, you know, as we're talking about, geez, if you wanted to do, you know, textile collection or if you wanted to have a separate truck, or if we wanted to, you know, all of those are, are, is money, right? So, so, um, you know, I'd like to see what the, I would imagine in that plan, it'll, it'll give us costs as to, you know, pathway one is going to be this much a year, pathway two, three, four.
Right.
Um, or, or whatnot. So, because that would be, I mean, that would be important. So, and my next question is to say we develop, you develop the pathways, we just say, hey, listen, you know, pathway two is really the way to go. However, we feel at this moment in time, we as a city don't have the bandwidth to implement this program. Um, are we able to go six months later or a year later and say we want to implement the program?
Um, I think so. One of the things we're going to do is Doug helped Olivia begin a letter and in the next week or so, um, perh- I, I think you're going to ask to continue the, the grant program a little bit longer because you had originally asked for a year. We, we started with nine months. So, um, with the letter of intent or even ahead of the letter intent to create a plan would be, uh, an ask for, we might want to continue this for X number of months additional. This is what, just to give us a little bit more runway and time. Um, and then a budget goes along with that. So that's something we already all talked about.
And to Councilwoman Apparale's point, so it, one of those pathways, would they include, uh, replacing recycle bins for all, all residents? Because again, we have the little tiny recycle bin that, I see a lot of people, you know, have went out and bought big cans on their own. But, you know, I, one of the bigger problems I see is that a day like today, the trash is out, it's forty mile an hour winds. Those recycle bins get tipped over, they're open and all, all the ends up, you know, on the shoreline, in the water, wherever it may be, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, so definitely one or all of those plans could have that. Again, without getting too many, you could have four pathways, four pathways with the container, for, you know what I mean? There's different things. We won't get the diaper recycling into it, but we might get a good, some, some things that are just basic. Yeah, for sure, into all those different points. So because that, that helps you to understand what you're looking at over the next ten years. Either a system that quite now is, right now is messy and costs eleven point five million dollars more or is there, what is in between that? And if you did do unit-based pricing, basically with an eighty cent and a dollar fifty size trash bag, say twenty-five cents for the green one, eighty cents, a dollar fifty, this is off the top of my head, you would wipe out all eleven and a half percent, all, all eleven point five million dollars. You would be at a net breakeven in twenty thirty-three. So that's like the other extreme. So is there something in between that and what is, and what does that look like? That's, that's the next step in process.
Yeah, I mean, I'd really like to see us maybe if we could extend the pilot, you know, for a full year, you know, till December. And then, and then we'll, give us a little opportunity to kind of, um, really work a little bit more diligently on the plan and, and implementing a plan that we think that we could sustain, so.
Right, and do you, I mean, in doing this, do you feel like representation with Tom McCarthy, with Olivia, with DEEP, it, do you feel like you want an additional sort of appointed committee? Do you want a resident committee? Resident committees, it's a little more difficult because you want to have some expertise in, in either business numbers or some, you know what I mean? So it's a little bit hard with resident committees, but is there any other, you know, body that, that you think could be helpful?
I think the city has a sustainability committee. I think there's a, so, so I think there are residents that are part of a sustain- no?
They quit.
They quit?
Yeah, it was dissolved.
Okay.
That's a strong word. They felt the job was completed, you know, it was time for new people to take over, but it didn't continue as a body.
Yeah, I mean, as for me personally, I always think that there needs to be resident representation, right? I think, I'd like to see a member of the council, maybe obviously, you know, we have a chair of, of the sustain- we have a sustainability committee. Um, but at the end of the day, you know, daytime government is the one that's going to have to implement this program. So that's why when I say I'm not confident, you know, we have, we have a hard time, you know, because it's the way of the world, filling positions and so on and so forth. So I'm not confident that we could stand up a, a really strong program at, at this point in time. And that's why I'd like the idea of extending the pilot.
I agree.
I'm all set, the councilman, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? Yeah, councilmen?
So I, I want to add for the council that there's an app, it's called, and for people at home, it's called Recycle CT. You have it, you can punch in everything and anything, and I mean, shoes, textiles.
They just told me that tomorrow's my pickup.
Oh, nice. Good.
That's awesome.
And then I just, I have a, a question for you, Kristen. Um, is there a way that we could get smaller bags? Because, I mean, especially for like households, like my, my household, we do it like a third or a quarter of the little green bag. I was thinking of getting the Lumi, L-O-M-I, the countertop, um, composter, um, thing.
So, so yes, absolutely. Uh, that's been one thing that's been confusing for people. We chose two sizes because the green one fits a five gallon bucket and because the, the, um, the one is a tall kitchen bag, which is the best-selling hefty bag. We, we chose those just to make it simple.
Okay.
Um, different communities do pick different sizes, so you have plenty of options with that, I think. You definitely want to make it as easy as possible for people and you don't want them to feel like they have to throw away a big bag when they only have a little bit of stuff. So, so I think definitely, yeah.
Okay, and then one last question. It, it might be for Doug. Um, what are we, what are we doing with our, our trash pickup in the big, um, the big, uh, metal containers that Public Works picks up? And what will we do, I, I guess? Or maybe that's not for Doug, I don't know. I guess it's a.
Yeah, well, we, we've talked about it.
I'll squeeze back here.
We've, we've talked about that. I, I think it's, you know, if you're going to ask the citizens to do this, then the government should do it itself. So, uh, right now we have what's called a single stream dumpster and we rely upon the other end of that dumpster to be separating recyclables out from it. And we know from statistics that the contamination rate is high, so most of that ends up in the trash. So city buildings should be separating here, putting it in separate dumpsters and getting out of the single stream business and collecting food waste around City Hall from lunch kits and things. If we're asked the citizens to do it, then we as employees should do it as well.
I noticed we're not recycling paper, so here in City Hall, we should be.
Yes, yes, right. Like, I cleaned out fifty gallons out of my office yesterday and was horrified that there was nothing I could do with it except put it in the dumpster.
In the garbage, yeah.
So I, we're, we're on board with that. And, um, I think that, uh, Olivia will take that to heart as well and include it in the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If I can, if I may, just add to the, um, the large recycling cart. So those are about a hundred and sixty dollars apiece. We'd have to go to a ninety-six gallon cart. We can get a fifteen dollar rebate through a grant per cart, which pays for the custom labeling on the cart. So that's going to cost you a lot of money that you don't presently have in your budget. However, when you do that, you're running a separate truck down the street that you're paying for to collect that. You could now go to bi-weekly collection on recyclables because you've tripled your capacity. Your recyclables would be much cleaner, so you're going to get a better tipping rate at the other end when your paper isn't soaking wet and you're not getting penalized because we're collecting in open containers. We're not getting the best tipping rate for the recyclables. So there's two ways you can pay for that. Your collection cost could drop significantly because with the cart, you can go to automate it now. You don't have to have three men on a truck. You could have one or two. So by rebidding your collection contract to at least automate the recycling collection, you could move to large blue carts tomorrow. You could include it in this budget without any of this program being part of the consideration. And I would encourage you to seriously consider that and ask them to price it out for you.
I like that idea.
Great, thank you. I did have one last question.
Yeah.
Um, the plastic that the bags are made out of, what happens to the plastic after everything is disposed of? Is that recycled?
So with the trash, it still goes to disposal. Um, with the food scraps, it currently gets de-bagged and goes to disposal. If we have, if there are, if, if this program is more permanent and we have additional communities doing it in Europe, the plastic from that is actually recycled. Here, it's not worth doing it for small pilots, but if we had buy-in for that, the plastic from those, from the food scraps could actually be recycled. It's not recycled back into a bag, but it is recycled into other plastic products.
Okay.
Um, because the, they have cleaning technology, you know, and they've already de-bagged it. Um, but the trash goes to the, it just goes all the way to the incinerator or to the land or wherever.
Right, because, you know, we're worried about this program and everyone's recycling more, but we will also want to make sure that these bags are recycled because if you have all this trash, I just have this vision of all this plastic being piled up, so what's the point? Um, so that would be really important for those bags to be recycled in the long run because they do add up in the end.
Yeah, so, so even when you look though at a waste characterization, this could shift probably sixty percent of your trash. The plastic trash bag is probably point oh, oh, oh percent. So it is something, but on the, on the list of things to get rid of, you know, it's not as high up as the large volumes of food or the larger volumes of other recyclables that we're not catching. Um, and then over time, ideally you end up closer and closer to zero waste. And if you have, for instance, a diaper recycling system, those plastic bags that are carrying the diapers would also get plastic. Recycled with that. So it's, again, it's kind of like, how do you plan, how do you deal with what you have today and try to go to the future? I probably, I say this in a lot of presentations, but a friend of mine, it, um, was the director in, at the city of San Francisco. And his thing is, can't let perfect be the enemy, enemy of good because otherwise you'll, you'll always be stuck waiting for perfect. So right now you're, you are in a good position to make some really big moves that can make a giant difference. And then that puts you on a pathway and you're sort of rolling and then it's easier to make those other, other jumps.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for Kristen?
I want to thank you so much, Kristen and Jennifer and Luke and Doug for this presentation. I think that, you know, the numbers are extremely good in comparison to what we were doing before. And we are making strides with this pilot program. And I hope to see everybody in West Haven doing it because it is significantly helping the environment and also making us think about recycling. So I think it's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. And just a reminder, if you want to come tomorrow night, that'd be great. Olivia can start, you know, kind of giving you the dates for other public meetings, but tomorrow at six?
Yeah.
Right here, there's pizza.
We got a little conflict tomorrow at six, but.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Well, yeah, we'll keep doing more.
And thank you, Olivia, for helping out as well. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. I would just like to say congratulations on such great results from your pilot so far. So thank you so much and I look forward to seeing you guys again on a, on a future update.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Right, that concludes our meeting for tonight. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.